If everyone would please stand. Commissioner Freeman is going to lead an invocation.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Our Father God bless our nation, bless our state, bless our county, bless our citizens of Gates County. Guide us, God, in making decisions for the good of our state and for the good of Gates County. Amen.
Can I go to turn this? Why?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will call me into order. It's not to see several, I mean, to try here tonight. We do not have any minutes to approve tonight because that has done it in our meeting at first of the month. We have agenda on the front. Do we need to make any adjustments to that? I believe if we could make one adjustment under new business, number 13, personnel board recommendations, if we can move that up to number eight under old business. And then if all the numbers would shift downward. Is there any, oh, adjustments to the agenda?
There will not be, I'm sorry, there will not be an announced allegation.
Okay, and so remove Marianne Pittman, 3B. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as modified with a removal of 3B and adding of eight under old business.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded in a discussion. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone who signed up for public comment?
Yes.
Helen Uier. Mrs. Uier, congratulations on your appointment as the county extension director.
Thank you very much. I was told to come and sign up so that you all could meet me.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I did begin two weeks ago as the county extension director, and I thank you all for this opportunity, I look forward to working with you, and I feel like I've come home.
Well, we're glad to have you. I am really sure that that department will be run very efficiently and be there to serve citizens of Gates County.
Thank you, Marianne.
Well, you're working with me. Okay, anyone else? Public comments? If not, we will skip down to public hearing. Under room number four. Okay, do I have a motion to enter into public hearing to concern the amendment to fees of fines and ordinance addition to act of hours fee?
So move. Second.
And a motion's been made seconded to enter into public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, so we're going to enter to the public hearing regarding the amendment to fees and fines and ordinance addition to act of hours cost. Do we have any public comment? Hearing none, entertain a motion to get out, go out of the public hearing.
So move. Sorry.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of coming out of the public hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, before us, you have seen the amendment. In recent, if you look at the amendment that was in our packet, and I'll read that to you. Inspections completed after 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, on weekends during the holidays, the permit holder will be charged a fee of $100 per hour. Inspections that help progression of schedule or benefit financially in the nature will be charged. Emergency inspections due to accident of other nature will be exempt.
Madam Chairman, I would think a needs inspection ought to be requested by the owner of contractor would be the larger subject of the issue.
Commissioner Jordan, I mean Commissioner Felton, you would like to add a requested by, act of hours inspection requested by contractor or owner?
And if I may, when this is put, if this is passed and it's incorporated into our fines and fees ordinance, it will have the $100 after hours with the short, maybe one sentence following it. It will not have the long explanation outlined here. So it can say Monday, after hours, Monday through Friday, fees will be paid by contractor or homeowner.
I agree with Commissioner Felton. It needs to be requested by the permit holder. Because, and I'm not saying it would happen if you want to work with the inspection department, but if we can't get to a job and all of a sudden say, well, we can work overtime and do it and charge the contractor or permit holder, I don't think we should, that shouldn't happen. So, I think it needs to be requested, and also, if it's requested, it should not be due to the county not being able to make the inspections in more than their hours. So I think these caveats need to be in there so that we make sure that everybody's on a level playing field.
I believe that this has been requested by certain contractors, that's why it has come up, that they would like for, so that they, they can progress on with their work, knowing that it would not be getting to, that they could not get to it until Monday or Tuesday, that if they'd be willing to pay more than coming in at hours or on the weekend. It's quite originated, but certainly often. So, requested by the permit holder, we do say, by due to acts of other nature, would be exempt. What wording were you thinking of adding? Requested by permit holder, I mean, if they have requests to come in at hours, then they know it's an extra fee.
Yeah, and also due to the fact that it's not a result of the county not being able to get to the inspections. Go ahead.
I actually submitted an email for what I thought it should read, but not in great detail. I think, I think the issue of after hours will take care of the timeframe that is requested. Because in the earlier dialogue, you know, about this issue, the thing we talked about was, you know, most of the time, it's going to be a concrete pour that's going to cause it. And, or a crane, you know, you hire a crane to come in, and that's a pricey name, and if you don't want it there the next day. And I think we also commented that's pretty, that contractors that would request something like this, like a $100 an hour, it won't be their first rode of it. It'll be something that they're accustomed to. I think the time, Henry, Commissioner Jordan, I think the, when the request is made, I think maybe there should be a separate application, and a lot of, I'm pretty sure someone will be over the phone, but what is the time that you want the inspector to be there and let that drive it? I mean, if he requested at four, then we should be there at four if that's all possible. But if it were a concrete pour, he might get there at four, but he might not get out of there by 5:30. Because we're, I think we agreed, or felt like we agreed that most of this is going to be situations with large or, we're looking at down the road, larger jobs.
And that's true, but, you know, this covers everything. I mean, it could cover small jobs as well, if we're not careful, because this is kind of a blank check. The intent is to satisfy the large contractors, and I agree, you know, they should have them into it with a formal request, but it needs to be, that their request needs to be not due to the county not being able to get to an inspection in more than their hours. You know, we can, many times, contract calls in, and he's, well, the inspector may be busy, says, I can't get there right now because of these jobs, and all of a sudden, you know, he's pushed back, this is Thursday, he's pushed back to Saturday morning, and we've caused a delay. I think we need to shore this up. We need to make sure that's a level playing field where we don't put citizens and business people in a position whereas, you know, county, we don't, we can't get to it so hot. All of a sudden, their request to overtime, they can't, $100 extra.
If I may, I just have a, I think I have a, well, I have faith and confidence in our inspection department that they would not delay it just to collect $100. But we also know that they set up their schedule, you know, contractors columns, I've just been recently through a building process, and it's, they were there, it might not have been the day of call, but in a few days, and if there, if there's a lot of activity, they're, you know, they have hours to work for 5:00 o'clock, just like most people in public employees have hours to work. And, you know, they'll get to them, I guess they keep a list or running list and get to them. I don't think, and they'll get to them as soon as possible, I don't think they would just delay it to draw the $100. And maybe I'm naive, but I just have faith and confidence.
I'm not saying that they would intentionally do that. I'm saying if we're putting the system in a position whereas there's no potential to happen. It could be through no fault, or it could be whereas there are backlog to the point where they can't get to it legitimately.
Well, and if there are backlog, and the person is not anxious, he can request them to come right back. He feels that's wrong.
Well, and the county, and we as a county, I mean, if we're going to, we're going to answer for inspections that are requested on time, then why should we charge someone an additional bunch to do an inspection? Maybe we should pay it, maybe we should pay it, or higher than that.
Well, this is not unusual. If you go to inspectors in all counties, most of them have a fee for act of hours inspections or Saturday's inspections, but it's driven by the permit holder, they request you to come out.
I think that's the whole thing, is this permit holder, they're going, they're going, they're convinced to do it on Saturday morning, so that's what they request. Must have mentioned that.
Okay, listen.
I'd like to make a clarification on Mr. Commissioner Owens and Jordan. The situations that have arrived, that where this is needed, one was a bank, they couldn't, they were getting a new generator in hospital, and they did not want to interrupt the business hours from Monday through Friday, so it was going to be on a Saturday or Sunday at their request to do this inspection. We came in and it was a time given, and we came in and did it at their time, and did what we needed to do to get back, back online, so when Monday came around, they were back in business. Other situations that have arisen, these solar homes, depending on the weather, the contract conditions, sometimes they'll run 24/7 in shifts. They'll run here today, and they'll run day and night. We've already had to do some on Saturdays, and the ones we got going on, and it's for them to accelerate their schedule and get done in their timeframe. Things of that nature is where this is applicable. Doing it because we're behind, then that's county personnel, that's not what this is intended for. It's for the contractors to request us to live in our regular hours to help them out. So they do. And again, I had, two weeks ago, I had a call Sunday for emergency electrical inspection. Lady had a tree, pardon the tree, fall across her overhead surface. I came out Sunday, inspected her surface.
And that's a act of nature.
And she did not get in trouble. Alabama electric would not turn her back on until I came in.
All right, but did you put in overtime?
I did not give overtime.
Okay, well, there again, we still took that out.
Well, that would be a act of nature.
Well, I, it does need to be clarified, and it seems like a specific incidence is trying to drive this with the banks being number one. And since a specific incident is driving this, then we should make it clear that it's had a request of the permit holder that's requesting this. And, you know, they're agreeing with the charge. I think this needs to be upfront charged as well, that everybody knows that they go into this, that this is what it's going to charge, it's going to be $100 if you request it for business purposes, for your convenience. And that needs to be noted, it needs to be upfront, not something that sprung on permit holders and the applicants at the time that they request.
The instances that had, they have been told upfront what the charge was, and most time we get were cheaper than a lot of the departments, and more than ready to pay the fee.
And we can put it on the, on the permit statement at the bottom, if you request act of hours inspections or Saturday or weekend inspections, there is a fee.
It may be too, Madam Chairman, as Commissioner Felton brought up, changing that to ten or either just an asterisk or a note, so you can add the request of permitting to.
Do I hear any, any other discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the act of hours fee for request, request for inspection by permit holder at $100 per hour when requested by the permit holder, and also when it's been noted that this is the charge for act of hours inspection, although that's upfront.
Okay, you've heard Commissioner Jordan's motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded, any additional discussion? Okay, the motion before us is that we will add to our fees and fines ordinance a fee of $100 per hour for inspections requested by the permit holder for act of hours and on weekends, certainly be notified when they get up the permit, that that will be, if they request one, there will be an additional fee charged. Okay, is that the motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. And thank you. Okay, now we'll go to old business. We have the county land use plan steering committee appointees. I believe we have received three applications from citizens of county for positions on that steering committee. I guess we need to take these one at a time. They're in your packet, it's on the table. You have time to glance over them prior to the meeting. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board? We'll take them one at a time, I assume.
Madam Chairman, I move that we accept Mr. Lewis's application to be appointed to that committee.
Okay, and you're referring to Todd Lewis, Ashton Todd Lewis? Motion's been made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I move that we accept the application of Earl Roundtree.
Okay.
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept Tom Morgan.
Okay, motion's been made and accept Tom Morgan. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second's been made, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I believe Ms. Baptiste is in the ordinance, didn't I see her come in? Okay, so goes through. Applications have been approved for county land. Do you have any?
The other committee members?
If you'll come up, please, so we can hear you.
I was just inquiring about the other committee members, if I had decided between seven and nine or 11, and who those members were.
I know at our first meeting of the month, you had a list. I do not have that list with me.
Madam Chairman, don't we have to have applications?
Yeah, yeah, so we do have top applications.
I think the other members were either agency or employees with the county.
So I didn't make any problems. I, my minutes for my license, I didn't bring them. The, I do remember there were a lot of county personnel and USC, Department of, I mean, Solar Conservation.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to ask the fellow board members if this would be a remedy to that. If the county manager, what would the board think if county manager selected from that previous list, the ones, you know, that could, that could help us to serve, and that might be so we can move forward with, with that land use program? What would the boards feel to be on letting her select the other members from that other list? The only thing, Mr. Ord, is that we have to have applications for the full of the board. I was thinking about her sending those, whoever she selected, applications, what I was thinking. And, of course, I think it would be proper for her also to contact the ones that wouldn't be giving an application. And, you know, we know these, we know these people, and I think they readily see that there was too many agency people on there. I would hope that they would. I think that's a remedy that would be quick.
Well, we need, seven names were presented to the board at last piece. Was that right, I think, seven names?
I believe so.
I know four of them, one was Wade Askew, but he was not a, he was the citizen. Matt Low was one, Ryan.
Saunders.
Saunders.
Timmy Headpep.
Timmy Headpep. That's four of them.
If I recall right, there was about seven names. Do we want, first of all, a seven, a nine member board or eleven member board? If you go to eleven, eleven members, all of the ones previously submitted, you still wouldn't have that. If you go to nine member board, someone's going to, would drop off on the others.
Well, since Matt and Brian are in the same office, I know that Solar Conservation, one could be ex officio. Because there were some on the ex officio committee. Am I correct?
Yes.
But I know we have been very, in the past, we have, we have made people go out applications.
They, they need to go out applications, just technicality, but we need to follow protocol with that. Well, is that not a good remedy? I mean, but you're saying use all of them?
I'm saying that we need to determine, first of all, whether we're going to have nine or eleven. The recommendation was by the vendor that's been subcontracted, that would be each nine. So if each nine, we select the three to nine out of the seven that's previously been notified, if they put in the application, if you take another six from them.
I'm going to filter through.
Okay.
Plus Wade would be four.
This is Johnny Carter with a six here, no, so, Matt Low, Brian Saunders, Timmy Headpep, Joe Green, John Carter, Wade Askew.
And what, six of seven?
Two, four, six, that's six, so with the three, that would be now.
You've got nine.
Yeah, because it's a point open.
It's a merit, you've got to put in an application. And you've got nine, and you could sell on nine tonight, you go on nine board, nine members.
Madam Chairman, can I get one, one thing out of the way?
Yeah.
I move that, I make a motion that we approve a board of nine.
Okay, motion's been made that we approve a board of nine. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have a nine, we're going to have nine people on board. We don't know who nine according to, we're going to have nine. We have three that we know of, Tom, Earl, and Todd Lewis. These all, Wade Askew, Timmy Headpep, Matt Low, Brian Saunders, John Carter, and Joe Green are the ones that you had picked for the pick. Do we want to entertain a motion that these, we will approve them if they go out an application?
I'd have problems with that. I don't have a problem with certain person on the list, it's fine, but we're, this list is involved by planning director, not, not by people applying for it. And I think we need to stick to protocol and delay this until our next meeting and see what, if we get any other applications. All of these people can be, can be approached and let known that they need to apply if they're interested.
We ran the announcement about what, how many weeks? Two weeks, so we need to run again. Run the announcement again.
And have the application.
I did not hear that.
And have the application.
Okay, I'm just waiting for a motion.
I move we table this until the next meeting and
I move we table this until the next meeting and pending whatever applications we have between now and then, we can consider. That motion approved, running, authorized, and running with another head. If that's necessary. Or we get more applications. That's fine.
I mean, these people could be contacted and asked, but you need to have an application. They have, none of them have filled out an application, is that correct, Ms. Baptiste?
I second Commissioner Felton's motion.
Okay, a motion has been made, table the motion for the additional six people to be appointed to the core group for the County Land Plan. And we will, until our August, our first meeting in August, and to run an advertisement, you can get a blurb on the side of the index, plus it's on our website. And you may contact these people, and if they apply, we will consider them. Okay, any additional discussion? Everybody clear on what we're voting on? Okay, we're tabling this motion, we are going to run an advertisement, and we'll see what comes up between nine and the first meeting in August. We had a motion from this Commissioner Felton, a second from this Commissioner Freeman, and I was just trying to restate the motion so it's clear to everyone. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, EMS proposal.
You have before you a letter, Chief Butt and I have spoken about this, we got this before you a couple months ago regarding the Rescue Squad applying to the NCACC Medicaid Reversment Program. The Rescue Squad completed the application and they were denied. You do have a letter that was emailed to you and is also on the table before you that's from DHHS. Chief Butt and I have spoken, we've also spoken with Edgecombe County, and they run their EMS system, I mean, excuse me, the Rescue Squad like we do, they do not run it. They allow them to use their national provider identification number. They are basically a pass through, which is what we are requesting, and that the Edgecombe Commissioners appoint a board for the Rescue Squad. The second letter you have outlines all of that and a little bit more from Chief Butt, and he is here to explain his proposals.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. Like the county manager said, the MPI number is, it's simple. It just needs to be the county's MPI number. Currently, we do business under our own identifier, and we need to conduct our business under an identifier that's the county government. It's a simple application process. Fill it out, send it in, they give you a number. All it does is identifies who the entity is that's conducting the business. The second issue in my letter is appointing our board. We currently have a board of directors that's elected by our members, and we feel like that doesn't show any control of the county in the work of the one. So if, if we, if we move to appointed members, those five non-members that are voted onto our board, if they were appointed by you, it would show some more reach into control of the department. The sixth person on that board currently is Billy Wynn. He's elected as a member, but he's also the EMS system administrator because of his job as the Emergency Services Director. So there could potentially be six county-influenced board members controlling the department and controlling the budget of the department, just to show more reach of the county government. And then the last item is just continuing to function like we do and let the funds pass through the county, still controlled by our department, not creating any additional work for the finance department.
May I ask a question of Mrs. Pittman? Will this be, I mean, you will be affected if the money's went pass through the finance department? What is your take on it?
I think it'd be, obviously, there would be some additional work, but I don't think it's something that would be separate, so.
And you have pass-through runs from DSS all the time?
Numerous funds and different departments, and I certainly think it's a far outweighed any additional work from our department. I think it's a, it could then, we can.
So you're okay with it?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna make sure the facts are clarified. Okay, any questions from the board?
I was curious if, if doing what you're suggesting meets, meets all the criteria in this letter here that was?
The NCACC says it does.
Okay.
That letter that you have from the DHHS was prompted by an email that I sent to them trying to probe into. My question was, will you look at our changes and tell us, will we be eligible for funds? And that's what we got.
Okay.
It's not a verdict.
Yeah, because they named a lot of things in here.
If you look at the denial, it came from the NCACC, and he, he gave us the, the remedy to be eligible for the funds. And doing these things meets all of those things. The program is very weird, the NCACC fosters it, the DHHS makes the final decision. How much does the NCACC drive that decision? There's no way for us to know that. But hopefully, these changes would make us eligible so that in 2017, we could see these funds.
Do you mind explaining to them, I know you shared with me how much money there's the potential for you to recoup that you are currently not resuming?
It could, it could easily be two to $300,000 funds. Currently, Medicaid pays 45% of the billable rate, and they, and they set the billable rate. So right from the get-go, we know, well, that we're only gonna get 45% of what we send out to Medicaid. And this program was designed to allow municipal EMS agencies to, to collect this all of that to try to, to close that buffer in, in that other 65% that's not, that's not paid out through Medicaid. And we have a, a pretty large Medicaid population. I don't know exactly what my current Medicaid billing rate is, but it's significant. I would bet you to say that 50% or more of our patients are Medicaid patients. This is that money that we were chasing when we did the contract in February. We, we were told then that that would help us align even more, but then they came back with more changes.
So, the breadth of what you're asking, and sure, that we, we won't be able to help to try to make it happen. But you don't play with made pay. I think we know that as county, they're serious business. And my concern is that, in the letter, it identifies the Rescue Squads, first of all, being a 501(c)(3), nonprofit organization who already have your NPI, that's, you've already applied for that. And they specifically say that because you're, you're not a government, governmental entity, that you are not eligible to seek reimbursement cost. Then they provide a remedy where it says, where it says to submit a white paper clearly citing the specific North Carolina law, which grants them designation as a governmental entity. Now, in my understanding, the general statute requires the county to have Rescue Squads, emergency medical services. We do not have to own it. The general statute requires that, I have the number somewhere, but there is a general statute that we have to do that. So that's a given. To the description of the organizational structure, if we're gonna use appointed members by the board commissioners, I think that needs to be explained. The articles in incorporation, all of these things that they're asking, I see as can do. I see it as a process where we could be upfront, get our attorney to draft it up, and submit it to them in this, in response to this. And that way, there's no question. My, my concern is that if we change this without addressing this and saying that, well, you know, we're gonna use appointed members by the board, and we're gonna use the county's NPI number. I mean, we're taking something upon ourselves to say that, you know, we know this beats it. But I think they need to approve it upfront as they requested here.
I don't think that you'll get the DHHS to do that. The NCACC has approved it. They sent us to Mecklenburg County, Union County, and Edgecombe County to make our systems similar to those systems, which are all private nonprofit systems like ours is, that's privately owned and ran under the statutes that you're speaking of that require the government to provide the service. That's what that contract that we got signed earlier this year was. The DHHS, I don't think you're gonna get to, you're not gonna get them to speak to whether we will or will not qualify you until you put that application in front of them again.
And wasn't a lot of this already in the application you submitted?
Yes. And July the first was the first day of money that will be paid out in 2017. So the longer that I continue to function under my current MPI number, the deeper I'm going into 2017 or 2018 eligibility. That's, that's why the rush to get in front of you all tonight. Because we're already eating into my numbers that play into how much money I can be reimbursed for 2017.
Well, let, let us understand this. So what you're saying is you wanna submit an application, the county to submit an application to obtain? But we already have NPI number?
We have, if I can read what this says from NCAC. It says, "In order for the Gates County Rescue Squad to participate in the future, one attain a Gates County NPI and NC Medicaid provider number and submit claims using those numbers." Because currently, the squad's provider number is part of private nonprofit. They, that would not change their 501(c)(3). That's a totally separate from a NPI number. So we would apply based and follow the application, and I have looked at that information, and it's not that long of application. It says, "Or the county can become a county, the squad can become a county agency, or there must be a process created by which the squad cost can be recognized as the cost of county government." Essentially, they become a county department, and we provide benefits, they become county employees. If you complete number one, which is the Gates County Government NPI and NC Medicaid number, that resolves this because the Gates County Government provider number would result in all payment payments being paid to the county government, and then we just turn around and write the check to the Rescue Squad.
Well, that's what I'm asking, I'm saying, we are gonna submit an application to NPI, the Office of OEM, they call it, Office of Emergency Medical Services. We're gonna submit an application there, we're gonna obtain an NPI of the county on behalf of the Rescue Squad. That's basically what you're being asked to do.
Yes.
Now, so once they approve that, then all funds will come through the county, and we'll disperse. I don't think that's, I don't have an issue with that. I still think that this letter needs to be addressed. And even if it's, it's basically saying that the county has submitted application for NPI number, identification number, which will bring this in line with what's required by, by the Department of Medical Services and health. Because if we don't, you know, we're kind of, it looks like you're trying to hide something. And I don't, I don't wanna do that. I don't wanna put, I don't wanna put the county out of the position where somebody comes back and says, hey, you're, you're, you're creating a situation that possibly look like fraud. And we need to be upfront about it, submit the application, let's make sure that they understand that that's what we're doing. And, I mean, we're legitimate. We've got general statute, and I can show you, I told them before, I looked at them before I came here. We've got general statute that says we have to have, we, the county has to provide emergency medical services units for their citizens. I talked with Mrs. Pittman. We have a line item where the county provides $25,000 a year in support of that. We don't have to do it, but we have to make, we can do it, and that's what we did. So there's, there's good linkage there. I think even the fact that we fund, partially funded, that's also a link. But as long as it's above board, I, I don't want to be having the answer to Medicaid if possible. I mean.
I don't either.
Well, you know, I asked the question, with that simple thing that you're talking about doing, answer all of these, because I read it in theirs. I mean, it says in here, the white paper should not clearly cite the specific North Carolina law, which grants. So they are asking for a little bit of detail.
I think what, I think what Mr. Flowers did in that letter you're reading.
It covered itself.
Is, is say, if you disagree with this denial, then you need to tell me one. And I don't disagree with this denial. I, I fully understand it because I, two days prior, got an email from the NCACC saying, there's the reason they denied it. So I fully agree that the denial should stand, is my thought about that letter from them. I don't disagree that we can send Mr. Flowers a letter, but I, I really, in the emails from him, he's not gonna go on record telling you, yes, you'll qualify in two years.
But basically, what he's done, he, he was obligated to make a response.
Right.
So he made a response. So he's not gonna do anything else until, until he gets an application to come across his desk or, or we would respond to this.
And the application will be for next year?
Actually, it'll be two years from now.
Is it? And I, and I'm looking here where it says, "We received Medicaid cost reports seeking a cost settlement." Is there any likelihood of reaching back for some of these?
They run it on, on their fiscal year, which is June, July 1 to June 30. So like I said, we just started the 2017 money, we're in that cycle right now. And what happens is they look at, at the business that you do in that calendar year for that fiscal year, and that number is what drives the percentage of the reimbursement that you get.
General statute 143517 says each county shall ensure that emergency medical services are provided to its citizens. So, so we have to have that.
I agree.
Second thing is we've got an ordinance, emergency management ordinance, that says there's supposed to be a medical transport advisory council created by the county, and the membership consists of the Gates County Manager, the Gates County Medical Director, the Gates County Emergency Management Director, the chief or best need from the Gates County EMS, appointee selected by the Gates County Board Commissioners, a sitting member of the Gates County Board Commissioners. Do we have that committee?
Yes, we do. We use it for the franchise ordinance. That, that committee exists and meets solely to, to grant franchise licenses to any applicant that wants to conduct business in Gates County.
Now, aren't we, aren't you taking up many of the duties of the medical transport except we lost one of the half?
We do. Whenever they were here, they and us held franchise ordinances. Whenever they closed down, no new franchise ordinance was issued to anyone. We, we conduct all of the licensed transports inside of Gates County.
And that was the understanding, so we, aren't you, by law, aren't, aren't you all supposed to be inspected, submit their application to all the medical, medical services as well, saying that you meet all of those criteria?
And we do that. We're licensed under OEMS.
Who's the commissioner that's on this board?
I'm not for sure. The last time it met, I wasn't the chief.
I think that board, to support that we don't pass it, I think that board needs to be, needs to be active and connected in this process as well.
The reason that we shifted over to the appointed board members and the current board of directors, the main reason we shifted away from that EMS advisory board is because it doesn't deal with Rescue Squad-specific items. It deals with. It deals with anyone operating a franchise. Red Barn Farms operates their wheelchair van. They have a sitting member on that board and they hold a franchise license. So we shifted that, that number two item to the board that's currently governing the rescue squad because they deal with day-to-day rescue squad only business, not, see what I'm saying, not any other outside entity. Edgcombe County uses their advisory council instead of their board of directors. So that was something that, that me and the county manager talked about, but it makes more sense for our board of directors who's in tune with what we're doing business-wise to, to help drive this decision and help control our budget like they do. Because I'm not allowing Red Barn Farms to control my budget if I compete from it. And I know that my membership will never, ever buy off of that. So at the same time that I'm asking you all to do this, I also have to go to a meeting on August the first and ask my members to amend my bylaws to, to come in line with this.
Yeah, but I'm thinking about also covering the county in the fact that, you know, we, we have to have a transport, medical transport service, and that our medical transport service meets all of the requirements that's called for in the statute as well as in our own ordinance. Because we chose not to, we had one over the hospital. They wanted to come in and we didn't let them in because we said, "Hey, we can take care of them." So I think that needs to be ironed out. I, what I'm hearing is that, that you're, you're separate. You don't come under this.
Ordinance. Under your ordinance, I do. You all gave me a franchise. You grandfathered us in.
Exactly.
As your franchise. And I can assure you that I meet all of your franchise requirements, ordinance requirements, because I'm, I don't want you to come in there and tell me, "Hey, you're closing your doors."
That only, not the membership council. That membership council needs to be active. That membership council should be.
I agree.
Would you think that membership council needs to meet twice a year? Would that satisfy?
I, I don't know what the ordinance calls for. I did not read that for employee rights. It was not, I don't know right off what the meeting requirements are, but certainly I would say twice a year at least.
That's what Hurford County does. Granted, the business that comes before that council is the license. In our case, the only license is us. So there's, there's not business coming before it.
But there's another requirement in there that says that, that inspection has to be done and paperwork has to be submitted to OEMS and Raleigh or wherever annually or every two years, I believe it is. So an independent, someone independent other than yourself has to do that. And that covers the county. That helps us that we're in compliance. So, and it also connects to our ability to have firsthand holding operations of medical transport. Yeah. Madam Chairman, I'm, I'm not opposed to submitting the application for a county NPI, but certainly I think the county manager needs to ensure that the requirements or things that are addressed in the letter are covered. And once we fill out the application, we can let them know that we've done that, we cover all these things, as well as ensure that we've got in place this medical transport advisory council as required in our ordinance.
So in a form of a motion, you are saying proceed with the application?
I would make a motion to proceed with the application for a county NPI number for medical transport services. And to respond to the DHHS S letter of having done such, which covers those things they're asking for. We can even reference the general statutes that require us to have medical transport services as well.
Okay. Commissioner Jordan has offered a motion to proceed with the application for the NPI number and to respond to the DHSS letter.
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion?
I have a question. Okay. I would like clarification on what you would like me to respond to Mr. Flowers, because the way I understand his letter is saying if you have an issue with this report, this rejection, then you need to respond with all of this information. And the information he's requesting was already in the application that was denied based upon the NPI number.
Well, we respond to it, we do not have an objection. We are proceeding with the county applying for an NPI number for our medical transport service. That way, we're still on board, we're still upfront.
Okay, that we are, that are opposing.
This is what I was thinking when you add and take this version of the lights. I was thinking that if we were going to respond to this, and I can see myself really wanting to, but if we were to respond to this, it could be a thank you. Dear Mr. Flowers, on July 20th, 2015, Gates County Board Commissioners agreed, voted to, to move forward such and such, thank you for your letter. Or thank you for your letter, you know.
And I still think that we should know that, you know, we are proceeding to, to submit an application.
To acquire NPI.
That we agree with his findings and we are in the process of applying for a NPI number?
They make it very brief.
Brief to the board. Okay. Is there any additional comments?
The only other point, Mr. Jordan mentioned something about state inspection, I believe that's taking place right now.
We get inspected every two years by OEMS as a whole, and then also all of our trucks are on a cycle that, that they don't all fall at the same time. It's constant inspections going on.
Who does that inspect?
OEMS. They send a representative typically from Greesville.
Okay. A motion is on the table. It's been properly settled. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Well, our county manager will respond, get the application, whatever you have to do to get the application ready to forward on.
He also has another request.
Okay. Second request.
Which was the appointment of the five board of directors directly for the rescue squad. This is separate than the one that Mr. Jordan brought in this ordinance.
Would these names, are they necessary for application?
You mean the name?
Which means we need to move fast?
Well, no, they get, the application won't be due until April 3rd.
Oh, okay.
Not next year, but the year after. So we don't have to move fast, but I would like to be able to go back to membership and say that we're moving forward with an appointed board versus an elected board, because it, I've gotta make those changes in my bylaws and that, it's not a fast process. It takes two months worth of meetings to do them. So if, if you all agree that you'll appoint my board members, those five, if one comes from each voting district, then that would help me know what direction to send my, my membership with the bylaws.
What does the bylaws say about the board members as far as, can the expenses or anything, if there are any, rather?
Says that they're not, they're not sort of paid, is the way they read right now.
Okay.
My, my plan, if you move forward with appointment, is at the board meeting next Wednesday night, is ask the five current board members if they will apply to the county for that appointment. Kind of like the land thing. I don't wanna put those names in front of you, but my hope is that those guys, those gentlemen that are already involved in it, know the business, will be willing to apply. If they aren't, then I'll take whatever members report.
Would they currently, would they represent each voting district?
They do.
They do?
Yes.
And how often do they meet?
Their by-bylaws are required to meet two times a year. We're averaging four to six meetings a year the last two years.
Okay. So you would like for us to make, give you a, make up a motion that we will.
Appoint those members and post them, do whatever we have to do legally to be able to appoint them.
I think that, that board needs to, to report to commissioners at least annually on actions and activities or things that are significant.
I can write that into the bylaws too, to require that.
So yearly.
How about the terms of each person?
Right now, that, right now, those five members, there is no term. They serve as long as they want. Of course, I'm still in the, in the amendment process of the bylaws. I've written it as the term is unconditional, but if that's something that you all agree needs to, to have a fixed period, then we can by all means put that in there.
It'd be smart to have one.
And like if they stagger, so you wouldn't have five new members at one time.
All the time.
Stagger. I do think it probably should be a term.
I have a recommendation it'd be three years stacked.
How would we start that initial stagger? Any advice?
I'm gonna have a one-year, two-year initial point, one, two, and three.
Okay.
And then after that, threes.
Okay.
We could even start with everybody having, starting with a three-year term. Because in your rescue squad, I know some of your makeup and your people, and they're, they're pillars to your operation. And like you said, they know what's going on. And, but if you started everybody with a, a three-year term, then one, one, two, and three.
Then they all, I'm saying that.
Well, I'm saying, but he's got a, he's got a board that he depends on. If everybody had a three-year term, then you started stabbing it at the end of the three years. If it was important to keep those people, and it sounds like they are, so I'm trying to throw you a bone to give you what you want with your board. So that's it.
Well, if we did a one, two, three, you could have served, you know, unlimited or two, three-year terms as that.
And it's not up for him.
Now, that person that served one year, all he's got to do is put in for the next three years. You know, they, you know, select a guest to provide her, you know, doing what that point did.
Would a five-year term be too long and give you the replacing one every year once it cycles out? Because you're, you're talking about five members.
That board commissioners, remember, has, that board commissioners, remember, allows their members to be however long their county appoints them.
But that was just recently changed.
Right.
Of course, that, the voters of the county need to take care of that problem.
Yeah. Another reason I suggested this scenario that is, not everybody is equipped. Not, I mean, you know, you guys know how hard it is for us to field boards, right? Not everybody's equipped to serve in capacity for the system rescue squad. I am not. I am not that person. And when you find good quality people to serve the rescue squad, you need, you need to take advantage of that. And that's, that's the reason I say that. Because I think the group that you need to pull in from, because you're gonna be trying to represent, your bylaws are gonna say that these be represented, one from each voting district. So you're already handicapping yourself of what your pool of selected people look like. I mean, I would say that this would be one of those, one of those times where we, we accommodate the need as our rescue squad and there are people out there willing to serve. I shouldn't want to handicap your selection process.
It's going to create, if I say this wrong, right now, you have five members that you are, don't want to make. All you want from us is to say that we will appoint those five members.
And it doesn't have to be those five.
Well, I mean, we appoint five members. I make that motion.
Second.
Okay. A motion has been made and second, is there any other discussion? And the discussion's been good. Hearing none, all those in favor? So, all those opposed? And you can work out in your bylaws and we'll see what they are of those.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Also, the county manager, manager to investigate the medical transport advisory council membership, see who they are, if they're active, and bring that back to us in our eight of office meetings.
I don't think we can have a motion for that, just bring that back, it's FYI. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the work you did. Okay. I believe that concludes, oh, no, we have, I'm jumping ahead of myself. The historic courthouse, I believe our county manager has a, oh, thank you.
You have, I recorded this as an email, but you also have it, I believe, in the pile that you received tonight. We had a conference call on Thursday. Chair Hoffler, Don Zellweger, Chuck LaSalle, James Andreas, David Israel, and myself participated. Last meeting, we had voted, we had discussed, soil testing, the commissioners voted to do that. I spoke with Matt Lowe and he and Ryan Saunders did do some soil testing. They said that they would do something before we went spending money. And it pretty much confirmed what David Israel with Geode Technologies who conducted the first soil test in 2012 had said, that it's sandy soil. Probably explained a little bit more to me, and their recommendation was not to pay for any more, any more soil testing. So during the conference call, that's what I recorded, and David Israel was in agreement after a couple of minutes of discussion. Everyone agreed that it was not the soil that's the issue, that we all came to the conclusion that it's the deterioration of the bricks. And what we had before you tonight to recommend, and it's not before you actually, but it was recommended a couple of months ago from Shelly Saath, where she would do additional work, and that could include review of historical and contemporary documents, including the construction, any construction notes that we had, maintenance modification, any upgrades to, of the structural system notes that we have. She would come back if it's necessary to document relevant conditions, arrange sample removal for analysis, which is what the committee agreed the other day, well, the group agreed the other day, that we do need some analysis of the bricks, not just in the west wing, but also in the east wing and in the main structure of the building based upon the age of the bricks. The east wing, James Andreas has noted, if you know what you're looking for, you can see a slight bowing of those walls as well. Of course, it's nowhere near as bad as the west wing, but he would, his recommendation was go ahead and test those bricks so that if something happened, cracks appeared, we would be prepared for that. And of course, she would continue talking with all the parties that are involved. This would, originally was a $5,500 proposal. She has already completed some other work, so it'd be less, a little bit less than that. It would actually be $4,750.
And they also talked three times.
Yes.
Which is with.
Historical preservation.
Concerning, and they, very, the consensus was, as you said, it's not the soil. It's sandy soil. It drains. It's not the problem of the soil. It's probably with the bricks. And so that we would know what to do, what we to take out the bricks that are there on that west wing and put in new bricks, or, you know, could we do it partially? What would be the most feasible? But certainly, we can't make decisions unless we know the, how the bricks are deteriorating or deterioration, and analysis of those bricks. Okay. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to say, Madam Chairman, this kind of information, you know, we need to get it for the board in advance, so we can kind of call over. Initially, we were contract, had concerns that, you know, if.
the bricks are deteriorating, or deterioration, and analysis of those bricks. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to say, now, Chairman, this kind of information, you know, we need to get it for the board in advance, and so we can kind of call over. Initially, we were contract, had concerns that, you know, they started showing up that brick, the chimney area there, the possibility that it would fail because of soil issues. Now, they're saying that the material's just not capable of being reworked. So we've gone from one situation now to this one. And I, you know, John has quite a few things here. He has a proposal, and she has one. I'm not sure how much in agreement they are.
No, sir, that from John, those are the minutes from the meeting that we had on Thursday afternoon. So that's why you did not receive this, an email till Friday, after I received this.
Did you send the email?
Yes.
We had a telephone conversation on Thursday, and he said, and then he sent the minutes, he called these minutes of the meeting, and he is, that, you know, he was wanting, the SASS, who is the conservationist, and her recommendations, they were very much online with what her recommendations were about sampling, that just to make sure that we are, there is no additional surprises. And what are, as part of the issues are, that when you remove the old brick and put new brick on, that also has a way of how they will react to each other, you know, when you introduce new materials to old materials. And so that's one of the things they want to look at. And just to see, remember, there are, how many layers of bricks?
In some places, two. Other places, I believe, it's five.
Five. So you have five layers of bricks in some places and other places. So some in the interior, there, mortar is not.
There's not any.
There is mortar, there is sporadically, but then he said that is not unusual in that timeframe. People who did work on public buildings sometimes took shortcuts, believe it or not, and they custom, they knew it'd be covered up, and nobody would see that there was not mortar the whole way across. Sometimes people don't change, you know, they're contractors, they take shortcuts. So that's what they, they're looking at.
The bus off of Reed Thomas has to be contacted, which is the historical representative, representative, I guess, the state ensuring that whatever repairs are done, they don't compromise the historic significance of the building. He has to weigh in on this as well.
And he was, he has to contact, he was contacted by John Friday.
I don't know if John's contacted him, but Mr. Thomas had indicated to us previously that if we did take down the west wall, and the west wall only, and we used new bricks and covered it back up, it did not destroy the historical integrity. So we would just need to check to see if the best option would be all three walls, because I did ask that question.
All three walls and the west wall.
Of the west wing, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Seems like, seems like we could be heading in the same direction, eastward.
Well, not necessarily.
And that's one reason they want to do the brick analysis.
Just actually, there is some settlement, settlement in any building, you know, so that, they just wanted to, and also compare that brick with the brick that's in the west wing.
So what would it ask to approve the services of the SASS to come in? She'll start at option one, and then based on what option one reveals, then she'll go into option two.
We already conducted option one. Option one was when she came back in May, I believe.
Was this email stated date?
Right, she came back in May, and that was option one. This would be option two. And she said she, option one was included in option two, because she did not know back in April which we wanted to do at one, at one time, or just for her to come in and make initial observations.
Does Reed Thomas, was he required conversation?
No. And he was here.
It's been a while.
Anytime we, anytime she's gonna be here, it would make a lot of sense to have him here.
He was not here when she came in April. He had been contacted, if I remember correctly, he had a conflict. And he was here in the beginning of April, I believe.
He was here, and he met with James Andreas, and James Andreas, and shared information, and they all talked to each other through emails and conversations.
I would fortunate to have the analysis done, and you continue on with that, find out that's what it was, what it was under the ground, for sure.
I make a motion that we received, but serves to allow me to study that.
Okay, a motion has been made to, to convene the services of Shelly Sasse.
Second.
A motion, a motion has been made, seconded, and in far more discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. And certainly she will come, be in contact with, when she comes, with Reed Thomas and with James Andreas and John, I think, well. Okay, number eight, personnel board recommendation. I believe last Tuesday, the personnel board met, and this is a recommendation from that board, that we separate the tax and water department. The taxes will collect their payments at their current location. The water will continue to collect monies from all the departments, except tax, and of course, from the water department. And that both parties will provide assistance to each party as needed. We know that sometimes there is, especially on the sixteenth of the month, there's a lot of activity in the water department. At the end of the year, there's certainly a lot of activity in the tax department, where people are paying taxes, and that each staff is free to, as team members of, as a team of Gaze County, that they will support each other and help out as needed.
I'm Chairman, I've read the proposal. I think I've been on this board now close to seven years. We've changed departments, we've reorganized, to provide our citizens know which way it's going sometimes. I think we need some stability. I think we need some effort to try to make it work. However, I've read the desires to have the departments separated again, back to where we were. And, you know, it gets a little bit, you go through this so many times, and it almost seems like that sometimes it may be a personality thing, but nevertheless, it's what it is. My one concern is that, for the tax department, they do have to have a safe. We did have a safe over the other building. What are we gonna do about the safe? How much is it gonna cost if we separate the departments? What are we gonna do about that?
I believe that it was, the tax administrator said that there was funds in her department that they could procure a safe.
Yeah, current old safe is actually being utilized if I'm not, I'm misunderstood, by customer service, so.
Good line.
Yes, sir, good evening, everybody. It was my understanding, the existing safe is currently being utilized by customer service, but we would find a means to secure the money with a safe. We've got funds, we can make that happen, yes, sir.
Is there a special type safe that has special requirement?
I don't believe so, no, sir. Active, good combination, and we've already met, made some initial attempts to identify the keys that go to the drawers that lock the money in the front, so to speak. So we've already identified the location of those keys, just a matter of a taxi, and we can make that happen.
How about all about bonding issues?
Yeah, I'm currently bonded, yes, sir, by county, and that happened, I believe, last fall, so, that's in place.
I have, I think we do need to keep in mind that we make change, we need to make as permanent changes as possible. Like I said, this is probably several times, I don't know, I can't specifically say, but that we've done this, and it gets a little bit, looks like that we're managing it from the board, the commissioners, instead of from the level that it should be. I got a dozen more comments.
Okay, and do I hear a motion?
I would be glad to make the motion, I want the personnel board to know that it may be proper.
Believe it would be.
I'll make the motion, we accept this.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been made, second. I'm on the personnel board as well. You know, as Commissioner Jordan's mentioned, we have made some changes over the years back and forth. I have not been on the board as long as Commissioner Jordan, but we have made some changes. However, sometimes when things are not working well, you need to make a change. And we're going to make a change, I think. One of the things is so that make sure that we try to recruit those money, those people who are delinquent in taxes, and set up a payment plan, and if they have good at the tax department to make the payment, they will know who's delinquent and who's not, and that can easily help that situation. We are concerned by collecting our taxes in the highest percentages possible, and we don't want anything to slip through the cracks, because of, you know, at certain times of the month, it's very busy in the customer service, and they don't have access to the tax records of who's delinquent and who's not. So that's why the decision was made. And like I say, our employees are our most important asset of our county, and it just, they all have agreed that this, they thought was the best proposal, and I think we, as the personnel board, agree, and that's why we made this proposal, so. And we're hoping that we're working, we're not making any, any other changes, are we? In at least a long time.
I think also, we need to, whatever changes we make, to make, make sure that it is for the best interest of our citizens as well.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we want to make things as much good as possible for our employees, but also, you know, we're here for our citizens.
This has also been a citizen request, for this change.
I understand in some situations, just as they have requests, but, you know, for the overall, it's gonna be good for all, not just one or two. That's what we're looking at, so.
And certainly, we all here for our citizens, and I think it'll be more efficient for our citizens, less time waiting in line, and all those things, and they can get response to answers. It's hard to be an expert on water and taxes and everything, so you go to the tax people for the answers on that, and the water people offer the answers on the water. Okay, any additional comments?
All personnel will stay the same, in other words, we won't have to add to the department or.
No, sir.
The water department.
No, sir. Okay, any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Okay, another part of the proposal would be, customer service will become its own department, separate from financial services. The customer service department will be comprised of the customer service department head, two customer service representatives, and three water meters. And that would permit our financial service department head to spend more time with county finances.
That's also a recommendation.
That's all, excuse me, I'm sorry, that was what was tabled from last meeting.
That was tabled from July 1st.
And that's tabled, and that's not in conflict with what we just read on the other way?
No. Because what was tabled was actually three recommendations, separation of customer service from finance, the second recommendation was customer service would take up all payments except for tax, tax department would take the tax, and the third recommendation was to change developmental services department back to the inspections department, because as Ed Mitchell has indicated, people do not know what developmental services refers to, they always come in asking, where's the inspections department?
Make it more customer friendly.
It was down here.
That was tabled from July 1st, that was one of the corrections, excuse me, one of the agenda changes that was made, that was left off, and we changed the personnel board recommendations.
What you just read to us, one name change.
One name change.
And?
Separate our customer service department as its own department. This other recommendation was taken care of by the personnel board.
I think we should take this one at a time, probably.
Did, Mr. Bell, do you, as members of personnel board, feel like this motion that was tabled was discussed in enough detail for you?
Yes.
Give me an aye on here, go ahead, say aye.
Madam Chairman, I'm ready for motions and votes.
Okay.
So now, the finance office, who's under that?
It would be payroll.
Payroll.
And accounting technician, and IT.
And customer service.
Is the department head, two customer service representatives, and four readers.
Three readers.
Water, water readers.
Meter readers.
Two customers, two customer service rep, and the meter reader.
Yes.
Actually, we created another department.
She was already acting as department head.
Back to the finance, payroll, county, IT, just a read.
Yes.
And just for clarity, now the customer service department will report directly to you.
Yes.
Do we, do you believe, kind of, do you think we need to create a fresh line of who's under who and all of that for distribution to personnel?
Like a flow chart.
Flow chart, or a trace chart, mineral possession chart, flow chart.
Yes.
Email us, copy of the decree.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move that we vote to approve the matter that was tabled at prior meeting that was discussed tonight.
Okay, and that would be to separate customer service, that would be under customer services, customer service director, three meter readers, and two customer service representatives. Finance would be finance, payroll, IT, and a.
I believe our name is accounting technician. I believe our name is accounting technician.
Accounting technician. And Development Services would just become Inspections Department.
Correct. Yes, ma'am, that's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Motion's been made in second in this far discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, I do believe that ends our old business. Moving to, does anybody need to take a five-minute break? Okay, moving right on to new business. We have a surplus equipment. We have numerous items to put on for surplus and disposition of assets. We have a whole list here and we've had one additional tonight added, a copy of... Because we have a new one delivered tomorrow, I believe. What is, would you like to make any comments?
Please note that one of these items is not to go out for Gov. Deals. There is a truck and it's in there and I can't remember. That is, we are going to surplus that and request that it be given to the community center.
It's the third one, please, in my package.
Otherwise, the rest of them are, we are requesting that they be surplus and sold on Gov. Deals. Some of them will be grouped with other items that have previously either not sold or that were previously surplus and we were holding until we received enough of like items to, there was a lot.
Chairman, all these things, things that are worn out. I'd like to vote on all of them except the vehicle in one lone vote, if you may.
Okay, I believe we can entertain that.
We'll take out their vehicle?
Take out the vehicle. And all items to be voted on at one time, is that your motion?
Yes, keyboards and stuff like that.
To be surplus and put on Gov. Deals. That is your motion?
Yes, ma'am, that's my motion.
Okay, motion's been made to surplus all items listed, most of our old computers, old phones, old printers, there's a few cartridges.
And there is one vehicle, but that is the computer stand.
Yeah, that's, all Gov. Deals. Do I have a second?
Second.
That motion's been made in second in a discussion. All the things in the package except for the truck that we are going to give to the community center. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, return to page three. This is a Chevrolet pickup. And it is to declare sub for us to give to the community center.
Chairman, I would, before we motion, vote on that. I would also like to see added to the motion that the County Manager will cite the General Statute that allows us to do that. Government funding has to be dispositioned. The gent is can't give it away, but the General Statute does allow you to, to exchange it or use it in another agency. But I think that needs to be specified in here that it's done, of course, with that General Statute, 168-264. So that we're, for purposes of clearance, that, in fact, the mellow record that it's being done, of course, with provision of General Statute.
Okay, so your recommendation is to make sure that in our transfer that to cite the General Statute. So that is the mellow record and the transfer. Okay, are you making that an informal motion?
I can make that a formal motion.
Okay, a motion's been made to that surplus of the truck from the emergency management to the community center with a notation of the General Statute to be included in that transfer. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made in second, or the end of discussion, visiting discussion. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you'll do that and include that for us, please. Okay, next item of the business, we have, tax revaluation is coming. And we have three people who have sent in proposals. Mrs. Lane, you want to tell us about it?
We do have three, actually, two of those are in conjunction with each other. Mr. Gary Piner and Mrs. Renee McGinnis will work in conjunction. That kind of serves as one proposal, if you will. And I can elaborate as much as I need to. You may have had an opportunity to kind of cruise through both bids. The first is Gary Piner. He was in Morehead City. He currently does all of our new construction every year. And he's done so probably, I believe, in Gates here for at least a good number, eight, eight years or more here in Gates. Doing new construction every year. Also not included in that bid is the new construction for Gary. If he is awarded a contract, that'll be a separate item based on the annual agreement. He'll pick that up every month for us. But he is going to do all the fieldwork. I failed last year in the last, well, excuse me, the last reappraisal effective for 2009. We had a pretty thorough measuring list, if you will. Had the outbuildings, the dwellings, commercial buildings rendered pretty well. So his proposal is for a basic walk-around. It's not a windshield appraisal. He'll get out at every dwelling, every commercial structure, new walk-around, reference what's there. Get new sketch dimensions if he needs to, or new dimensions of what's on the property. He's also going to get a new digital image of that building infrastructure. In the case of several buildings on the property, we're going to get two or more if we need them. If there's a case where an additional dwelling is in place. And he's kind of working up the specs. I feel very reasonable, it's well under, prior to my coming to Gates, I was getting ready to begin my ninth reappraisal. And this is a really conservative number with a good product in store as well. That parcel count, we've got, well, we've got little, we've got nine parcels, parcels over what Gary said. We've got actually seven, 7,869, but that's kind of a moot point for that because it's still about 833 per parcel is what we're looking at from him for the walk-around. Also in that, he has, he will be made available to do any informal appeals if we need him to. Usually what we anticipate is three to five percent of the parcel count for your informal appeals. And that's only a very high number. We did pass for county, I believe, and we had little, just over three percent and they have 21,000 parcels. So even if everyone came out of county to appeal about you, that, that number would still be, I feel reasonably low.
Can I ask a question at this point?
Yes.
If there was an informal appeal, would we really need the services?
Now, that would be the discretion of the tax assessor. It's been my experience that the assessor does not interject him or herself in the informal appeals, although they can. They're there to review the parcel, to make sure the data is correct. That could be something in-house. I've never worked in county actually where the assessor has been involved. They may have sat in on a few appeals, but that's certainly not unheard of.
I mean, I was thinking about, you know, the revow stuff that we do. Now, would you call that, is that, would you clarify that as informal?
It is, yes, sir, it's very informal. The property owner usually makes an appointment. They bring any fee appraisals that they may have regarding the property or if they're in prep programs or if they've had a PERC test done, that the soil is unsuitable for building, I'll say. Basically, any evidence is brought into that informal session and you just discuss it. You print the property record cards, you analyze land types, open, footing. You look at the square footage on the dwelling. So it's very informal, much like when we get to the next step of the E and R. So anybody traditionally can serve in that role. It's been my experience, the appraisal firm usually gets involved just as a matter, I'll say, separation. But it's certainly not unheard of. I mean, that could be, that could be also absorbed within house, so to speak.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no, no, absolutely, it's a good point. Because that's, like I said, that's the bulk. A lot of times the taxpayers don't understand, they get that new revow notice, they think it's a bill. And it eventually will be a bill, but they don't understand the overall process. And most of the time, they just want that explanation. If it's an elderly citizen or somebody who is getting deferment or if they're, you know, in that land use or they're getting exemption, they just want to understand the process there. So, yeah, as we look at Gary, like I said, he's $55 per hour for any informal appeals that he would be involved in. And then we get to Renee McGinnis. Her portion of it is a little bit more technical with regard to the redoing of the schedule of values. Every eight years, of course, those schedules are redone to reflect what the market study tells us. The land rates, dwelling rates, per square footage rates of frame storage, dwellings, what have you. Every, every portion of that schedule is redone to reflect what the market tells us in terms of price per acre and all the sales data. Renee's also included, as I mentioned, that market study, which you analyze trends, where the market's going, where we anticipate it would be going based on sales, qualified sales, I'll say. Even though we're in the time where the foreclosure market has certainly, has flooded us again. There are good sales out there and the Department of Revenue tells us that we target those sales and then we produce those as a benchmark. Also, with Renee, she's included a quote for data entry. I anticipate with the in-house proposal for Renee, I'll say, to do about half of that data entry. That would, that would kind of have us a little bit better aligned, we feel. With Renee approximately good half or a little bit more than half, that would be about $6,400, $6,500 per portion of it. Now, in-house, the tax office or even a part-time data entry clerk could be considered. Certainly with our revow reserve, we do have funding in place that would not have that, you know, inflate or kind of fall out of margins.
How about time constraints on that part for that entry? On your side?
Yeah, no, I don't see it overwhelming, no, sir. Usually with the sketch matrix that we utilize in the software now, it's pretty, it's a more friendlier base unlike the Dewey interface, Keystone, old Keystone, ProCom that we're leaving. It's much more user-friendly, so you can toggle through those fields and render a sketch and, you know, have a two-story dwelling drawn relatively quickly. I mean, it's user-friendly, therefore, Betty Morris, who was here earlier, actually, that's initially, I understand, how she started. She came over from the elections and began initially doing that entry on the last revow. So she's, she would be my first pick with that and any additional part-time person, I'll say. You know, within the county or out of the county, that certainly wouldn't, you know, exceed anything, or myself included. You know, for one thing, we're doing a walk-around because I think the parcels are really good shape. I think some of our data, as opposed to maybe some, I don't want to say GIS or issues. But our data is pretty good, I feel comfortable with that. There are a few things we want to find too. We got to, yeah, address those solar farms that are out there and the cell towers with allocating commercial sites. But that's just a matter of decision based on the rates we use per acre. Everything else, I feel, is in good shape. And not just because I went from the last revow, certainly, you know, I don't say that for that. I think our records are pretty accurate, you know, aside from some math issues, of course. But anyway, I think we're in good shape with that. I don't feel that burden would be unnecessarily overwhelming on the tax office. I would say that if we were like Voper or even Little City with about 22,000, 34,000 parcels, I might feel differently. But I think with about 78, 7900 parcels, I think we'd still be a very good product utilizing Renee and Gary on the project.
Do you have, sort of combining Gary Piner and Miss McGinnis with your, using your $6,500 figure on the data entry? What do you, what would you have their total at?
I've got Gary and Renee's total at about, and this is a range from 118 on the minimum, 118,000 to about 130,000, that's a range. And that high number, 129,000, 130,000 is if Renee was, you know, within her role or even Gary's role absorbed in all of the facets of doing all the appeals. That, that 130 represents that very high number, which I don't see. And that's based on a five percent. Yeah, that's based on five percent of the appeals, which, I'll be truthful, I've never seen, but it could happen. I mean, things, you know, things happen. But that's based on if we had five percent of all the parcels in the county, that's, that's the high number. Four grand total for them, like I said, 130 at the very max based on, that's the term key job with the tax office, myself, obviously assisting with the compilation of the scheduled values. Anywhere from interjecting comments to helping rewrite portions of it. Getting, getting a land use defined with the present use value rates from Department of Revenue, getting those incorporated. Not that they are not already, but just cleaning things up a little bit, sir.
I didn't understand Shackleford, I want to jump over there, can I do that?
Yes, absolutely, from our angle, yes.
Shackleford, page seven. Where they listed their price, where he says, "We were also requested to provide..." Can you, can you clear that up for me?
At the top, he says 162,500 and then he goes down to 132,500.
Yes, this is what he basically quoted as a random sampling. That is to say, he would, instead of going to every parcel, he would do every fourth parcel or every six parcels if you're working in a township, so to speak. So it's basically not a windshield appraisal, but it's a far less reliable method. And that was something, he did interject that in there. I'm not relying to that because if I'm out and I'm at Mr. Smith's house and I drive into his house, his driveway, and I go down and I don't drive into Ms. Mary Barnes's house or whoever, they're going to call the tax office and they're going to say, "You're not here, you're not here, how do you have accurate..." So we will definitely be pulling into everybody's driveway.
In that scenario, when you're Mr. Jones, how do you, how do you price the ones that you skipped over?
That's right.
Evidently, this is a method that's used some way.
Yes, and he phrased this uniquely. I didn't really request, I mean, in terms of the sampling.
That's my next question.
Yeah, because I don't, you know, we, we've done slider projects in the van that are far more reliable than this skipping every six or parcel, if you will. So that was intertwined. And when I read that too on page seven, I didn't really, because it's not a desired method. If you're going to do a basic appraisal review, don't go out into the field at all. Do it from a computer or use Google Maps. I mean, that's, so I don't, I'm not really a fine component of that random sampling. And I will say, I'm, I think it's no secret how I feel in terms of, you know, with doing it in-house and having Renee and Gary involved in that role. But I would, if there's any additional information that the Board would need to make a decision. We don't have any timelines established and out of one proposal because they were just that, just initial RFP bids, if you will. So we're looking at, if all goes well, September, getting some market study analysis together if the Board approves. But any other additional information, I've been asked by Renee, Gary, and then Shackleford firm to, don't hesitate, you know, to solicit, "The Board would need some more..." The board would need some more information, or for myself, actually.
Okay, so as you said, your recommendation is to go with Hunter and McGinnis?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You heard the presentation from our tax administration administrator. What is the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I would, I would like to just see a little bit of bio of Gary.
Okay.
Pull him up on the internet. That's what I can do with, he's been incorporated two years.
Okay.
What is, what is the requirement for board commissioners? I didn't get a chance to look that up. And to bring in an appraisal firm, I know we're tasked with doing it every seven years, whatever the statute calls for. But as far as ensuring that who we get is certainly qualified and capable, Stan should speak to that. I'm not sure if he speaks to that specifically.
Specifically, no, but they do mention that the board or the assessor, they have some, I'll say, leeway, or some freedom there in terms of who they choose, either in-house or whatnot. They often recommend that at least that person be certified by the Department of Revenue just for your basic add-on purposes. That's which I know Gary's got some I double A O certifications, of course, in Eastern Carolina, graduated. But I'll be happy to compile his complete, you know, get in touch with him and certify.
I would certainly like to see that on the table.
Absolutely, yes, indeed. I can get that for you.
And if you have other questions? I do know other counties have recently had some revaluations completed, Chilwell and Camden in particular.
By Camden?
Yes, and Brooklyn.
Yeah, that's, certainly, I think that should be for the board.
Okay, absolutely, yes, sir.
So if you could bring that to us, would you, I can't, to table this into our August 1st meeting?
I would certainly like to see the table until August 1st, to have that information for them.
Okay.
I'm Brian.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, I'll make that happen.
Thank you, Mrs. Lane.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Okay, if you'll make the motion to table the reevaluation, the awarding of the reevaluation bid until August 1st.
Until August 1st, until we receive the information from the submitter about proposals, submitted for proposals.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motions been made a second, and for further discussion? Hear none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Okay, item eleven is just an announcement informing the board that the state has approved the two appointees to the D S S board, and they are, these appointments came from Mrs. Angela Green from Social Services Commission, the appointment of Jonathan Jennings, a bill of vacancy held by the late Mrs. Fanny Stavey, and Mrs. Sandra Nickens, was reappointed, basically FYI. Okay, moving on to the next. A letter of support for bonds for the infrastructure of North Carolina State Parks. We have an email from Joy Greenwood, who, of course, is head of Merchants Mill Pond. If you've read through the correspondence, you see that this bond initiative will be very welcome for Gates County if it goes through, because Merchants Mill Pond is in line to receive improvements to the tune of one million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars if the bond issue is approved. So certainly, and it would increase the number of visitors than we would make that portion for R B camping, and to maybe add some cabins. Do I, what is the pleasure of the board?
Do we need a resolution?
We need a resolution in support of the bond referendum.
We can either, last, I didn't speak with Joy about this. She said either a resolution or a letter, either one, two, the other. So there is not one in here, because I did not know which you preferred.
So I guess that's up to us. Would we prefer a resolution or a letter?
I sort of like the resolution. I think it looks full-blown, certainly in the document.
How about signature? What would you think?
Yes, sir.
Each, each of the four women?
Yes, sir.
And I believe they're asking us to send the resolution or to, to our legislative delegation. So that would be Representative Hunter and Senator Cook. I guess we could, I don't know, maybe we could send it to the majority leaders of the parties.
We've got Sandy here. I don't know, we've got Commissioner Owens, too. Maybe we've got two financial experts. What are, are there, what are the repercussions of bond issuance to the county in case, once you issue a bond? Obviously, they're sold, and there's a certain amount of interest or whatever that's paid to the investors, in case of default or something. What, it would, it would come back to you?
Well, in this scenario here, it can be done by the state.
This is a state.
A state bond.
Well, if the state would just issue the opportunity to purchase bonds, you wouldn't be able to purchase them individually. What they would do, they would select representation throughout the state, major firms, and they would solicit, they would go out and solicit big dollars for the bonds. It would be hard to buy a hundred dollars into this program. We're talking about tens and twenties and fifty thousand of dollars. So that, but it would be, the bonds would be secured by the state treasury situation.
Okay, so basically, there's not going to the county?
No, we would just benefit from, from the bond program.
Because we would be liable to subject to the bonds.
All right.
Okay, so did we, like? Now, it has a motion been made to pass a resolution in support of this bond referendum for the North Carolina Division of Parks and Reparations.
Sure.
Okay, a motion's been made, probably second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
We will bring the one back at the August 5th meeting for reading the signature.
Okay, last item of the new business, the senior gains funding. We have received a request from Ashley Lamb, who is the Avramal Senior Gains Coordinator. Thirty-second annual, Avramal Senior Gains are upon us, and they're asking for a contribution. Have we attributed in the past?
There's never been any money allocated in the past budget.
I think what's happened is every year, every time we've gotten this request, it's been at the wrong time of the year, and the commissioners have gone back and asked, they made their request in the spring when we were doing our budget. And I don't know if they've changed hands, or, you know, if it's just something that they don't plan that far ahead for, but the request seems to come in every year at the wrong time of the year.
Think we can buy a couple hundred dollars?
We do have people who participate from the county.
I think several years ago we did. I think we have done it in the past, not recently, but if you so desire that, I'd absolutely be able to find a couple hundred dollars.
Okay. And we'll just have it reminded, people at the Avramal Commission of Area Eight can see, who next year apply law, so. Do I hear a motion to, to, I mean, to agree to send a, a contribution of two hundred dollars?
Sure. Second.
Motion's been made a second. All those in favor say, any discussion? Excuse me, I'm getting ahead of the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Okay, so if you all send that, and you might put a request like that before I budget that time. Um, yes, that's right. I received an email from Sarah Monahue, and it is a greetings. She would like us to send birthday greetings to Mrs. Imogen Savage Freedom. She's getting ready to celebrate her ninetieth birthday on August 7th, 2015. She's the mother of Sandra Nickens, and of course, the mother-in-law of Carl Nixon. Nickens, yeah, Nickens, who was a former commissioner. And I know we, I know we have sent greetings in the past to various people.
The normal, right, nine, the century?
The century was, and the twins that were at Dine East.
Hundred and one.
Were they a hundred and one?
One hundred.
One hundred.
One hundred, because I went to the birthday party. She's ninety, but, you know, a lot of us don't, are not going to make ninety.
Well, Chairman, I'm going to be honored that request, actually, and sort of send her a letter.
Okay, motion, are you making that formal motion?
Yes, ma'am, it's a motion.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor sending greetings to Mrs. Sarah Monahue on her ninetieth birthday, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and hopefully, we all can make your own. Okay, any additional citizen comments at that point of the evening?
All right, what comment?
Yes, sir, if you'll step to the podium, please.
Well, I'm here representing the Gates County North Carolina Carolina Church Ambassador's Inc. And for you, Madam Chairman, this is a letter. We didn't have enough money to mail it to you. Sorry about that. For Commissioner Jordan. And would you give this to my counterpart, Godwin? Thank you very much. Good night.
Okay, thank you. Okay, commissioners' comments? We'll start with Commissioner Owens, the name too.
All right. Well, it's good to be here, and thank you, folks, for coming and participating tonight. Again, we've had a spirited debate on some issues, and I thank my fellow commissioners for that. And I'm looking forward to getting home tonight, or I'll be quiet.
Well, I thank everyone for coming and interested in what we're doing, making decisions that we make. And we just want to point out that, you know, we are concerned about all of our county, our employees, our citizens, and so forth. So whatever we do, we want to try to make better quality of life for everybody. And we just thank you for choosing us to try to do that.
Well, thank you, everyone, for coming, too. And as Mr. Jordan was just saying, you, everybody knows here that, just like you, we're looking for the best things that we can have in the county. And I do appreciate all the work that our farmers do, our customer service, and taxes, and finance, and there's our registered deeds sitting out there, too, and I appreciate that, and it's very nice and very good seeing my neighbor here tonight.
I, too, wish to thank everyone for their participation, whether they have voiced it or not. We do hear from you with telephone calls and in the hallways of churches, with, with good things as well as some complaints. We do address those complaints. And I want to thank our county manager and our chairman, too, for, for keeping the board informed and helping us make decisions, we do. I'd like to remind you that our commissioners all are kind and just to each and every one of our citizens, so thank you.
I also like to thank you each one for coming. As you see, we all have opinions, and sometimes we agree, sometimes we disagree, but that's great, because once you have diversity, you get better decisions. And I do want to thank our employees. I do think they are our most valuable asset of the county. They are a public face of Gates County government. And we want them to do well and be successful. We thank our county manager. And we do want to hear from our citizens. Don't hesitate to call us. Don't hesitate to stop us in the grocery store, or wherever we are at the ballgame, to talk to us. That's how we find out what's going on, and we appreciate it. And, you know, we're here for Sarah, and we try to do the best job we can. And we want to take a recess before we go to the closed session. So we'll take like five-minute break and come back. Okay, one minute, I can read something. We are getting ready to go into this closed session in pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143, dash three, one, eight, eleven, legal, economic, development, real estate, and personnel matters. So move. Do we have a vote? Okay.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we'll get, okay. Do I hear a motion to come out of closed session?
So move. Second.
Motion's been made a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. First motion to consider, Commissioner Owens?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairman, I move that we instruct our county manager to contact the landowner, that we discuss the closed session in regard to the ditch and the county property line.
Okay, a motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, motion's been made, second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Second motion was coming out of closed session that we had directed our county manager to contact the Mike Fauster, who had a preliminary soil test, on site discuss, discussed, drawn for the session. Did I hear, I mean, does anyone approve that motion or make a motion?
Sure.
So move?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
Motion's been made, oh, a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.